He just said, where did Frank go?
Can you never get over that?
Oh, it's different. Right, good. That one is... That was from Washington. There's no be... There's no... Well, they're everywhere. That's a bad spot.
Okay, we good?
Yes, good.
All right. So let's call the order. The workshop meeting for May 17, 2022. The time is 5:07. Yeah? Call the workplace.
Councilmember Escobiet?
Here.
Councilmember Vamanto?
Here.
Councilmember Stoyel?
Here.
Councilmember Nichols?
Here.
Councilmember Alvaro D'Amico?
Here.
Blood leader? Blood leader Susan Flack, United States American, and to the Republic for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Okay, communication from the mayor?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to respectfully request a moment of silence for the victims of these shootings that occurred in the city of Buffalo this past weekend. Thank you. Be sure we will also leave that beginning of the meeting. And also like to just let everyone know that tomorrow at 4:00 PM at the boardwalk, our special events team with our development department will be having a press conference with some of our sponsors. We're going to be putting out all the events, the scheduled events that we have for the summer season. And everyone's welcome to come. It will be made public. And for now, that's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. Let's go into communication in the public. Questions?
Number one, request from Katie Lomishko on behalf of the Kajusko Club to close Nevin Street to traffic between East Dodie Street and Courtney Street on Saturday, July 9, 2022, from 5:00 PM until 12:00 AM, and on Sunday, July 10, 2022, from 12:00 PM until 6:00 PM for their annual street dance. Also requesting picnic tables, bandstands, police patrolling of the area, and loudspeaker permit.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, let's move on.
Okay, number two, request from Danielle Gare on behalf of Highmark Western New York to use Washington Park on Saturday, July 30, 2022, from 12:00 PM until 4:00 PM for their Come One, Come All Community Fun Day event. Also requesting representation from the City of Dunkirk Police Department and Dunkirk firefighters to engage with the families as well as extra trash bins at the park.
Any discussion, council?
Chris, where can I get guys' contact on that? Little chaperone?
I'm not aware that we have, but we can definitely put something out.
Councilman Stoyel, as the chair of public safety, could you get that back to the fire department?
I will do that.
Thank you. Okay, let's move on to number three.
Request from the Chautauqua Center to sponsor two sunset yoga classes on July 6, 2022, and August 3, 2022, at 7:30 PM at Point Ratchet.
Discussion, council? Okay, hearing none, let's move on to four.
Number four, request from Frankie Barris to host a one-year anniversary celebration of The Fixed Barber Shop and more at 87 Lake Shore Drive East on May 21, 2022, from 1:00 PM till 5:00 PM. Requesting Leopard Street be closed from Second Street to Lake Shore Drive for the safety of the children and eight picnic tables. That's actually Deer Street that he's asking to be closed off.
Any discussion, council?
Yeah, just so these people, whoever, once this gets okay, that they notify the fire department too, that that area will be...
Excellent. And they were hoping to close it off at the halfway point so that there's still access to the VFW. From the VFW to Lake Shore Drive is predominantly what they're looking to close off there.
Okay, and if they plan on doing this next year, Edwin, can you just put a little notation to give us more than five days' notice?
Absolutely.
As required by the permit on the slip of paper that they fill out.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further? If not, let's move on to number five.
Number five, loudspeaker permit applications from Katie Lomishko on behalf of the Kajusko Club to use microphones, amplifiers, and speakers on Sunday, July 9, 2022, from 7:00 PM to 11:00 PM, and on Sunday, July 10, 2022, from 1:00 PM until 5:00 PM for their annual street dance.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, let's move on to six.
Number six, loudspeaker permit application from John Miga on behalf of Dunkirk Memorial Pool 62 to use microphones, amplifiers, and speakers for live music on May 30, 2022, for their Memorial Day festivities.
Any discussion, council? Okay, hearing none, move on to seven.
Number seven, loudspeaker permit application from Robert Manning, Jr. on behalf of Dimitris on the Lake to use microphones, amplifiers, and speakers for live music from May 15, 2022 through November 15, 2022. Times will vary from 1:00 PM and ending at 1:00 AM.
Any discussion, council?
Is that the time pending or not again?
Well, that's what I was wondering about the 1:00 AM part on that.
They're in the D1 section, which gives them special privileges.
Okay.
Okay, also, would you do the same notification on them to... If they would... She'd give us the 30 days because May 30 already went by.
I can reach out to them, thank you.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's move on to number eight.
Number eight, loudspeaker permit application for Blessed Mary Angela Parish to use microphones for outdoor mass and live band on August 14, 2022, from 10:00 AM until 8:00 PM for their annual Blessed Mary Angela Polka Fest.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, let's move on to number nine.
Number nine, loudspeaker permit application from Ned Devine to use microphones and speakers at the Brooks Lodge Pavilion at Point Ratchet on August 3, 2022, from 5:00 PM until 9:00 PM during the annual Dunkirk Democratic Picnic.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, let's move on to 10.
Number 10, loudspeaker permit application from Gabriel Vasquez on behalf of Highmark Blue Cross Blue Shield of Western New York to use microphones, speakers, and amplifiers on Saturday, July 30, 2022, from 12:00 PM until 4:00 PM at Washington Park for their Come One, Come All community event.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, let's move on to 11.
Number 11, loudspeaker permit application from Captain Aos to have DJs and bands for entertainment from May 1... I'm sorry, May 14, 2022, through October 31, 2022, from 3:00 PM until 1:00 PM.
Any discussion, council?
I have to correct that. That last as a typo, it should say the 1:00 AM.
The same thing, I just would ask Edwin if you would let them know that they would... Should give us the 30 days. Because the 14th already passed.
Yep. So noted. Any other discussion? Okay, let's move on to 12.
Number 12, loudspeaker permit application from Frank Barris to use amps and speakers for DJs during the one-year anniversary celebration of 716 The Fixed at the Open Lot at the end of Deer Street between Second Street and Lake Shore Drive East on May 21, 2022, from 1:00 PM until 5:00 PM.
Any discussion, council?
Councilman?
Yes, sir.
You had something? Edwin, if you could, and Richard, and the empty lot is not owned by the City of Dunkirk?
Correct.
All right, so just make sure that we're not giving up permission to do that down there, and I have to get permission to actually use that.
Absolutely, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir. Thank you, council.
So 12 should be pulled?
No, no, they have permission from the owner of the property. All they're asking us for is to close off the street so that people can go back and forth, and also for loudspeaker permit.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion?
I do have... I'm sorry, can I move on?
Go ahead.
So I have a walk-on loudspeaker application, and this is tied in with a request... So this is a request from the party to have the lower pavilion reserved for June 18, 2022. They hope... They want to use the bandstand for the DJ that they hired for their child's graduation party. They don't need to have anything special in there, they just don't want to have storage in there so that they can have a DJ there. That request is on its own, and it is accompanied by a loudspeaker permit, so we should probably do these one at a time.
Okay. So any discussion, council? Okay, we'll bring them in a little meeting.
Thank you. And then the second part of that is the loudspeaker application from Sabal Markham to use at the lower pavilion on 6/18, 2022, from 3:00 to 7:00 PM.
Again, any discussion, council? Okay, we'll bring that in separate little meeting.
Thank you. And I have... I have a walk-on request from the Dunkirk City School District. This came to me via the police department. They are asking to have chaperones at the Blessed Mary Angela Center so that they can have a dance from 8:00 PM until 11:00 PM on May 21, 2022, and they were hoping the officers would be... Would have a breathalyzer and also chaperone the students.
Yeah, this is something we do every year.
Yeah.
Any other discussion, council?
I just did the same thing, Edwin, because she's new and being this... In this position at the school, so she would have to probably be notified if they need... If they're going to use any facility or request anything to give us a...
It's going to have to give them detention, ma'am.
I know. Or out-of-school suspension.
And it seems like the problem is earlier.
Yeah.
And I have the final walk-on that we have is from the Resource Center. The Resource Center, excuse me, filling the gap and slow roll Buffalo on permission to conduct a group bicycle ride in the city Saturday afternoon, June 4. Our ride is scheduled to begin and end at 64 on the pier. The ride starts at 1:00 PM and ends at 2:30. The long and the short of it is they want for the council to give them an opinion where they should have their second mass up. So they get together, they allow the riders that have fallen off to gather, and they were also hoping that someone from our development department may be on hand to give them a verbal tour of the city, what they can do after they're done with the bike ride, and what they can take back home to them as far as activities in the city of Dunkirk. The only thing that they need from us is basically for the council to pick a park or allow them to pick their own park to do a mass up. And they've also given us a liability insurance coverage so that they're covered on our city streets.
It's 2:30.
We need to time. It's 2:30?
2:30 looks like when it ends.
From 1:00 to 2:30. They didn't request any police assistance or any barricades or any road closings or anything like that. So they're just basically notifying us that they're going to have this thing, and they're asking the council to maybe... I'm sorry. They're asking the council if... For their opinion on whether they should use Pangolin, Washington Park, or Wright Park for their mass up.
Does anybody know how many people this would be involving?
I do not know, ma'am.
Well, if you wanted to show off Wright Park, which this would be a great opportunity to do it at Wright Park, I think that would be wonderful to do it there. It's a large enough area, and there's many things to do, if they wish to stay a little bit longer.
Captain Zabilla, establish with owner of your press office.
Yep. Any other discussion?
Was there a tournament set there? I thought one of the others was...
What's the date again? June 4th? There is a tournament.
That's Saturday, June 4.
Is that the 5th?
Yeah.
And that's Hazleton Run, too.
Yeah.
They might want to go west, head towards the point or Memorial Park, even more... They'll be done by 2:00 o'clock.
Well, the...
5:00 will be done.
By then.
So the tournament will go on all, but they can still be down at Wright Park at the stand.
So the discussion last time was about a tournament, and they asked us to move the tournament to afternoon because the Hazleton Run was taking place that morning. But they felt that... They felt comfortable that the run would be finished by noon. So this starts at 1:00, and a slow roll is that. It is a slow roll.
They're stopping at 64 in the rocks at 2:00 till 2:30, whatever. Then they can go down Wright Park Boulevard and get down to Wright Park because of...
Sure. Sure. Sure, slow roll.
Well, I mean, I'll be the guest speaker if anybody wants to join me.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move on to reports of standing in special committee. Councilwoman Stoyel.
Well, here, I just wanted to say that the Dunkirk City Charter states we follow our rules of order. Therefore, there is to be justice and courtesy amongst us, and the rights of the minority are to be respected. I have not been receiving this from Councilman Stoyel and Councilwoman Nichols, and I demand respect. And I've reached out to NICOM, and the first step suggested was to change... What to change is to make sure I knew what the other kind of meetings were, and that's what our charter states regarding meeting rules, so I wanted to just let everyone know that I have contacted them. And it's something that other people have been bringing up to me, have spoken to me, and it's on... It's on video.
Okay, anything further?
No.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Vamanto?
Randy, like, residents of Sixth Street, we know we got water line rooms developed in Sixth, and some other complacent areas, some people on the pen later on the corner there, we sent updates.
Contractor's coming back to fix a leaky valve. I spoke to a few of the residents on the corner and that about the depressions in their lawn and that. That was all filled in over the winter, and of course, the saddle, but we'll make sure they get in there and put tops on their level and all.
Great.
Yeah, it's... We've maybe reconsidered doing these kinds of projects over the winter for numerous reasons. At that point, it was... It is what it is, and we had to hear the thoughts.
Thanks. Is Glenn here?
Yes, back here.
Mr. Glenn?
Glenn, the burms, the railroad burms up on Third Street, both West Third and East Third, is starting to grow again. We know we had an issue last year, and are you the contact guy to get a hold of the railroads?
Yes, I have the contractor that the railroad is hired to maintain those.
I mean, it's not crazy now, but I'm bringing it up now because I know how long it takes for them to get here. And could you please have them start at the west end this year so they don't finish halfway through or finish in the east end?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Stoyel?
How's it?
Thank you. Councilman Nichols?
I just want to feed off of Marty's. I think I don't know who did last year and the year before, the one on Main Street Extension by those tracks up on that spur that comes off there. Remember they cleaned that out where that pond is by the turnway? Was that the city that did that, or was that the people from the railroad?
That was a private contractor that did that work.
Okay. But is the railroad also responsible for that or not?
I'm not entirely sure who hired them to maintain that spur. Do you think that's...
Yeah, it was a joint effort between the city and National Grid that has high-voltage far lines through there.
Right.
So they have... National Grid had a local contract working in that area. We extended that contract to clear that road, too. Their visibility along Main Street was really getting bad because all those invasive species were invading the road. We got rid of them. So... But it's a different... It's a different situation. If CSX has given a notification, they'll clean the berm on Third Street. It's a little bit different. The city... The part over on Main Street was actually city property that we cleared. Let's see, right away. Over on the... On Third Street, that's railroad.
Right. I didn't know what the spur there meant, if it was in conjunction or if it's... That was... I know it was a separate company owns spur that came in because of the product they were bringing into the plants that were there, but the plants are no longer there using it, although there is an occasional one that comes through there. So I didn't know they were going to Red Wing.
Yeah, the railroad along Main Street is still part of CSX's system, same... The same company that owns the one along Third Street.
Right.
But the trees that were in the way are in the city right away from Main Street, which happens to about the right away from the railroad. Railroad had kept that right away clear, but the city ditches and stuff had a lot of overgrowth, and we took care of it.
Exactly. When that comes down and cuts over, it does Franklin Avenue as well, and those weeds there get very tall, and it's just a catching spot for trash.
Yeah, weed is a courtesy. Weed trip the weeds along Franklin where the railroad comes through down there between Courtney and Telkot. There's other abandoned rights of way through there that the building inspector sends out notices to the railroad, and they have those contracts cut, or the railroad cuts them.
That's it for now.
Thank you. I have nothing, anything under unfinished business? Okay, let's go to prefiled resolution, 47.
Number 47, resolution authorizing professional services contract for the Fourth of July or July 4th fireworks display.
Any discussion, council? Okay, hearing none, let's go to 48.
Number 48, resolution authorizing removal of old playground facility.
Any discussion, council?
Thankfully, this will be done relatively quickly. Randy? Right?
Yeah, the school and the city can work together. Mayor's had some conversations with school officials on this, and it'd be maybe a couple of checks to make sure we have all our legal ducks in the row, and then we can get right to it. Get this down sooner the better because it could be a hazard, and we'd like to eliminate that. And we don't feel we're taking away from anything because at the same time, a brand-new co-compliant playground is being built at the middle school, which is not so far away from this. It's got better parking centers.
And there are also eight other small playgrounds located within the city, too, so we're not suffering by this. It's just a safety issue. Thank you.
Okay, let's move to 49.
Number 49, resolution...
Resolution authorizing acceptance of bid from DFP to install Wi-Fi hotspots in Wright Park and Point Grasset.
Any discussion, council?
Will citizens need a password? Because I know sometimes you do, sometimes you don't.
We can look into that, ma'am. Yeah, I don't know. Okay. Anything else? Let's go to new business. Any discussion, council? Again, hearing none, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions? Any discussion, council?
Yes, that was, we didn't say it during the workshop, but Chris, is that all right with
the police patrol there?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Okay, if not, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions? Any discussion, council?
Yes, that was, we didn't say it during the workshop, but Chris, is that all right with
the police patrol there?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Okay, if not, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions? Any discussion, council?
Yes, that was, we didn't say it during the workshop, but Chris, is that all right with
the police patrol there?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Okay, if not, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions? Any discussion, council?
Yes, that was, we didn't say it during the workshop, but Chris, is that all right with
the police patrol there?
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
Any other discussion? Okay, if not, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions?
Yes, that's it for now.
Okay, let's move to 49.
Number 49. Resolution authorizing acceptance of bid from DFP to install Wi-Fi hotspots in Wright Park and Point Grasset.
Any discussion, council?
Will citizens need a password? Because I know sometimes you do, sometimes you don't.
We can look into that, ma'am. Yeah, I don't know. Okay, nothing else? Let's go to new business. Okay, need a motion, Mooters? Anything? 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 Okay, need a motion, Mooters? Anything?
to sponsor two sunset yoga classes on July 6, 2022, and August 3, 2022, at 3:30 PM at Point Grasset.
Any discussion, council? If not, can I get a motion to refer to the appropriate departments, subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions?
General.
Second.
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large D'Amico?
Aye. Carrie.
Number four, request from Frankie Vares to host a one-year anniversary celebration of the Fix Barber Shop and more at 87 Lake Shore Drive East on May 21, 2022, from 1:00 PM till 5:00 PM, requesting Deer Street to be closed from Second Street to Lake Shore Drive at the midpoint for the safety of the children, and also requesting eight picnic tables.
Any discussion, council?
Yes, Councilman. I just asked during the workshop if Edwin could please notify any of these organizations or groups that wish to submit an application that they should abide by the 30-day notification or request. We're getting more and more that are asking for this either after the event or what they plan on doing, or very five days before. And they should give us a 30-day as it's requested on the forms.
May I, sir?
You're... Go ahead.
I just wanted to interject, Councilwoman. This is... The 30 days are for loudspeaker permits. All they're asking for here is for us to close down the street between the midway point on Deer Street and Lake Shore Drive, ma'am.
Okay, so noted.
I understand that, Edwin.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? If not, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions?
First and second.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilman Stoyl and a second by Councilwoman Nichols.
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large D'Amico?
Aye. Carrie.
Number five, loudspeaker permit application from Katie Lemishko on behalf of the Kajusko Club to use microphones, amplifiers, and speakers on Saturday, July 9, 2022, from 7:00 PM until 11:00 PM, and on Sunday, July 10, 2022, from 1:00 PM until 5:00 PM for their annual street dance.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as subject to appropriate insurances and usual conditions?
Second.
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large D'Amico?
Aye. Carrie.
Number six, loudspeaker permit application from John Miga on behalf of the Dunkirk Memorial Post 62 to use microphones, amplifiers, and speakers for live music on May 30, 2022, for their Memorial Day festivities.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments, subject to appropriate insurances and as usual conditions?
General.
Councilman Stoyl?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Nichols.
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols? Councilmember at-large D'Amico?
Aye. Carrie.
Number seven, loudspeaker permit application from Robert Manning Jr. on behalf of Dimitris on the Lake to use microphones, amplifiers, and speakers for live music from May 15, 2022 through November 15, 2022. Times will vary from 1:00 PM and ending at 1:00 AM.
Any discussion, council? Again, hearing none, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as subject to the appropriate insurances and usual conditions?
So moved.
Councilwoman Luskoviac?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bemanto.
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large D'Amico?
Aye. Carrie.
Number eight, loudspeaker permit application from Blessed Mary Angela Parish to use microphones for outdoor mass and live band on August 14, 2022, from 10:00 AM until 8:00 PM for their annual Blessed Mary Angela Polka Fest.
Any discussion, council? Again, hearing none, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments, subject to the appropriate insurances and usual conditions?
General.
Councilwoman Nichols?
Second.
Second by Councilman Stoyl.
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large D'Amico?
Aye. Carrie.
Number nine, loudspeaker permit application from Ned Devine to use microphones for speakers at the Brooks Large Pavilion at Point Grasset on August 3, 2022, from 5:00 PM until 9:00 PM during the annual Dunkirk Democratic Picnic.
Any discussion, council? Okay, hearing none, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments as well as subject to the appropriate insurances and usual conditions?
So moved.
Councilwoman Luskoviac with a second and by Councilman Bemanto.
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large D'Amico?
Aye. Carrie.
Number 10, loudspeaker permit application from Gabriel Vasquez on behalf of Highmark Blue Cross Blue Shield of Western New York to use microphones, speakers, and amplifiers on Saturday, July 30, 2022, from 12:00 PM until 4:00 PM at Washington Park for their Come One, Come All community event.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments, subject to the appropriate insurances and usual conditions?
So moved.
Councilwoman Luskoviac? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second amendment by Councilman Bemanto.
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large D'Amico?
Aye. Carrie.
Number 11, loudspeaker permit application from Captain Ailes to have DJs and bands for entertainment from May 14, 2022, through October 31, 2022, from 3:00 PM until 1:00 AM.
Any discussion, council?
Is this the appropriate time, Edwin, and I would suggest that you would contact them to give...
Ma'am, this one and the other ones that are listed here, yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate department, subject to the appropriate insurances and conditions?
General.
Councilman Stoyl with a second and by Councilwoman Nichols.
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large D'Amico?
Aye. Carrie.
Number 12, loudspeaker permit application from Frank Vares to use amps and speakers for DJ during the one-year anniversary celebration of 716, the Fix, and at the open lot at the end of Deer Street between Second Street and Lake Shore Drive East on May 21, 2022, from 1:00 PM until 5:00 PM.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate department, subject to the appropriate insurances and usual conditions?
General.
Second.
Got a motion by Nichols, second by Stoyl?
Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large D'Amico?
Aye. Carrie.
Okay, I have four walk-ons.
Do the walk-ons, okay?
Our first one is a request from Sable Markham. She has the lower pavilion rented on June 18, 2022, and they are requesting the use of the bandstand that is adjacent to the pavilion. That is their only request on this request.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate departments, subject to the appropriate insurances and conditions?
General. Second.
Got a motion by Nichols, second by Bemanto.
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large D'Amico?
Aye. Carrie.
The second is for the same groups, for Sable Markham. They would like to have a loudspeaker permit for the same date so that they can have a DJ for the graduation party.
Any discussion, council? Hearing none, motion to refer to the appropriate departments, subject to the appropriate insurances and usual conditions?
General.
Second.
I got Nichols with a second and by Luskoviac.
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large D'Amico?
Aye. Carrie.
I have a walk-on request from the Dunkirk High School requesting the assistance of the Dunkirk Police Department on Saturday, May 21, 2022, at the Blessed Mary Angela Social Center. They're requesting two police officers be present from 7:45 PM until 11:15 PM. They would also request a breathalyzer test be done on each student in advance.
Any discussion, council? Okay, Chris? Okay, no other discussion. Can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate department?
So moved.
Appropriate insurances and conditions?
Second.
Got a motion by Stoyl, seconded by Councilwoman Nichols.
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols? Councilmember at-large D'Amico?
Aye. Carrie.
The last walk-on we have is a request from the Resource Center Filling the Gap and Slow Row Buffalo. They want permission to conduct a slow row through the streets of Dunkirk. They have presented us with liability insurance, and they are hoping that the council can suggest whether they gather at Pangolin Park, Washington Park, or Wright Park when they do a mass up, which is them allowing the slow riders to catch up. They were also hoping to have some kind of assistance from the city, possibly the Development Department, to go over the facilities and the availability of our parks and recreation in the city of Dunkirk.
Any discussion, council?
Yes, I suggested Wright Park, and then possibly maybe since EJ was on the ground floor with all the construction, with the play areas and everything, if EJ could be over there maybe to do a guiding hand, unless Vince wants to come in and do it from the development.
I've been working with Resource Center.
Oh, okay. But it would be ideal to show off Wright Park down there with all our fun projects that we've completed.
Any other discussion? If not, can I have a motion to refer to the appropriate department, subject to the appropriate insurances and conditions?
General.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Nichols, seconded by Bemanto.
Councilmember Luskoviac?
Aye.
Councilmember Bemanto?
Aye.
Councilmember Stoyl?
Aye.
Councilmember Nichols?
Aye.
Councilmember at-large D'Amico?
Aye. Carrie.
Let's go into standing and special committees. For yours, Councilwoman Luskoviac.
Yes, I would also personally like to extend my sadness and prayers to the victims' families of the tragedy that occurred in Buffalo, May 14, and to express my desire for a community of love here and everywhere. Thank you to the mayor and the administration for all that you do. And then I have a question for Randy. There are docks that wash to shore on the sand by the high-rise, the opposite side of where people swim. Can we get rid of those? Kids are walking on them. Someone's going to get hurt. And afterwards, can we clean up that area?
Sure. The last part first, that is an area that we clean up regularly. The docks have broke loose from the marina operator. He's been contacted and has agreed to take those out. It's happened before, and it's been a fairly easy procedure for that person to get those out of the way. Once those are out of the way, we can send our equipment in there, cut the weeds, and groom the sand, and make that attractive.
Thank you.
Sure.
That is all for me.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Bemanto?
Randy, Mike, there's a leak on Corner of Sixth to Roosevelt. What's the update on that water leak?
Contractor has been contacted. It's a valve that was fed two different ways. They're going to handle that. And also, I know a lot of the residents have complained about their yards, sinkholes and stuff in their yards from the project. They're aware of that as well, and they're going to do site remediation in the area here directly.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Glenn, it's that time of the year where the railroad tracks down on Third Street, Birm. You're the point guy on getting hold of railroads. I'm going to get this out there early so we can get that taken care of. That goes all the way down Third Street, east and west Third Street. You can look into that.
I'll talk to the contractor that CSX has hired to do that.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor and development, that's great news from the EPA. So thank you very much for all the work you did to get that some more money here for the city of Dunkirk. Also, I'd like to send out my thoughts and prayers to all the victims and the victims' families in Buffalo and all the citizens in the city of Buffalo. We're with you here in Dunkirk in our heart. It's out here for you guys. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Stoyl?
Yeah. Mike and Randy, going off of Old Street into the point, the DMV is requesting that we let them use that as a defensive driving course. Is there any way we can get those potholes straightened out?
I thought you were serious, roommate. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we set that up on purpose so that it would be bar of a slum course in their driving course.
Yeah.
I will get together with Jason and the Streets Division now that the Black Heart Plant is open, get those fixed, because those are going to wind up in Beijing if we don't fill them in soon.
Yeah, there's been one in Baltimore that lost already.
Yeah.
That's all I got. I appreciate your help. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Nichols?
Yes, I would just like to reach out to our Streets and Parks crew for the phenomenal job they have done on our beaches this year. It's great to have them done so early. They are just wonderful to look at. It's just unbelievable. A lot of people are mad because there's no driftwood for them to be picking up to decorate their yards, but I'll tell them I'll find out where they put them, and they can go up there and sort through. I just want to make the announcement. June 11, Revitalized Dunkirk is going to be having their plant sale behind the incubator. It's going to be starting at 9:00 AM. They're on vacation now, so they can't do it. And they're requesting no early birds, please. Third Ward brush collection. I think we're on a wing and a prayer on that one for right now. Just please be patient. It might be extended for a little bit longer. But we are in the third ward. And just a reminder, when cutting your grass, please do not cut it so that it's throwing it into the streets. It's dangerous for motorcycles and bicycles, not to mention how it plugs up our receivers when we have a rainstorm. And we could... We've been known to have very bad summer rainstorms. We just want to keep everything on the up and up. And I just want to talk to you after the meeting, Vince, on something else, okay? And I know all our hearts in the city of Dunkirk are just devastated by what happened in our neighbor city, Buffalo. It is a tragedy, and it's...
Very close to home.
Yes, it is very close to home. And it's just... You can't explain it. Just pray, and pray, and pray. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. One thing, Richard and Kate, could you update me on the... I had a request on the livestock policy in the city of Dunkirk.
So generally, livestock's not allowed in the city of Dunkirk? However, there has been one successful that I'm aware of,[1555.78]